Unanimous, and I'm so sorry Melissa, I should have pointed out our entire board is here. Melissa's calling in and is not in the best location, so if she drops off, we'll try to get her back. But she is here and participating. Alright, so we do have a couple of special guests here today. Stephanie Cannon, the Health Director for Carteret County, and Kim Davis, our Nursing Director with the Carteret County Health Department are both here. And they've got a presentation for us, but before you get started, I just want to tell you how much what you're doing is appreciated, not only by the school system. I've worked with your department personally, and what you've been through since March until now is unbelievable. And how professional you've handled this whole situation is remarkable. So on behalf of the board and really the entire school system, we want to say thank you so much for what you're doing. And I will also say, I really misled both Stephanie and Kim. They thought the meeting was at 1:00, they have a meeting right after this. So they do have a presentation, and then we'll try, if there are some questions, we'll try to get those, but they are going to have to leave pretty quickly. And Tabby can follow up with any questions we have there. Thank you.
Thank you guys, I hope if you can hear me, can everybody hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Alright, so we'll just jump right into it. I'm Stephanie Cannon, the Health Director for the Health Department. And I was going to save this for the last part, but I'll say it now. I just want to thank the school system, they've been very, very, very helpful to work with, they're very forthcoming. We're on the phone with them daily. You know Blair has kind of, kind of been one of our go-to people here. And the school nurses have been great in sharing information with us, so I just want to commend you guys for having a good staff. It's been fun and easy to work with through the process that's not been fun and easy. So we try to make the best of it though. So we'll jump right into it hopefully.
And while they're getting that straight, I will tell you, did it go?
No, I think he's just gonna advance the slides.
There's obviously nothing more important than the health of our students and staff, so that's why, you know, obviously we partnered together, and that's why you're here today.
Of course.
Mike, can you advance her?
Okay, so this is kind of the graph I wanted you guys to look at as far as the percent positive rate trends. You know, not going into a lot of this, you guys can look into this for yourself, but you'll see the past three weeks, and this is the data last for the week of September 19th. Is all we have data for, we got that report yesterday, so we'll get the next week's report on Wednesday of next week. So you'll see a steady decline in the percent positive, so this is just one indicator that can kind of show us how widespread the transmission is in our community. So we're starting to see that go down, which is great, that's the direction we want to go. So the WHO recommends about 5% as being that threshold. So as you can see from the past three weeks, we have been below that threshold, so that's great, that's something we want to continue seeing. Next slide. So when you look at the age breakdown, this is for the entire, all the cases, and this is as of yesterday morning, so it doesn't include what we reported out yesterday. But it really shouldn't change all that much. You'll see for the population that we're talking about today, when it talks about elementary school kids, only 11% of our confirmed cases are coming from that age group. So we're start, we're seeing more of an increase in cases in the 25 to 49-year-old range, and then the 50 to 64. That's primarily what we're seeing right now. I'm not saying that we're not seeing any school-age kids, you know, testing positive, because we are seeing that. But it's not, that's not the biggest area of growth right now for us. Next slide. There's a lot on the slide, but basically what I just wanted to point out is that we have, so far we've had 33 Carteret County residents that have been admitted to the hospital. So that's about 4.7% of our total confirmed cases have been hospitalized. So conservative estimates say that our actual case count is actually higher than what our confirmed case count is. So we're estimating two to three times that the amount of confirmed cases for the actual cases. And so you'll see that hospitalization rate kind of goes down once you increase that denominator. And so just two areas to point out is we've not had any hospitalizations in those younger age groups. Next slide. So this is deaths in North Carolina. So you'll see that about 1.7% of the confirmed cases in North Carolina have succumbed to the disease. But you'll see, again, you'll see some of the conservative estimates, and I won't go into all of that. But you'll see that there's only been about four deaths in the younger population. So one death in the 0 to 17 age group in North Carolina, and then three deaths in the 18 to 24 age group in North Carolina. So you know, that's a very positive sign, that's a very good sign. Definitely for those four families, that's pretty tragic, so it's not without its risk, that's for sure. Next slide. So COVID-19 deaths in Carteret County, we've had six of those. And again, that puts our mortality rate at about less than 0.1% in, or bless them, 1% in Carteret County. And so we have not had any deaths in any of those age groups that we're looking at today, the 0 to 17 and the 18 to 24. All of our deaths have been in, individuals have been 65 or older and have had pre-existing conditions. So again, those are some positive trends that we're seeing. And definitely, we're not out of the woods yet, and we're not, you know, it's not going to be impossible for the really tragic things to incur. But as of the past seven months, we, the data does not show that. Next slide. So to sum up everything, the CDC has a pretty extensive website that talks about the role of schools in children's development. And I don't, I'm preaching to the choir here, you all know that. So a lot of what the CDC is saying is that there's a role of schools that those children need those needed services that they're getting at school. Whether that's, you know, food security, whether that's that social support, that behavioral health support, that when they're not in school, they're not getting that. So that can lead to some negative consequences, as you all know. So what we're seeing is available evidence shows that generally speaking, children have less severe illness than adults when they do contract COVID-19. Not saying that they could not have severe illness, but generally speaking, that's what the data is showing. There also, the data is showing that children who are aged 10 to 17 are maybe more likely to become infected with COVID-19 than those children that are ages 10 or under. So that's, again, another early report from, from what we're seeing. And again, we're only seven months into learning about this virus, so there's a lot that's unknown out there. So all this data that I've presented is not to say that there aren't risks with doing whatever options you are, you know, considering at this particular point. I definitely think, you know, one of the points that's up there is that, you know, there are children who have underlying health conditions that, you know, being around others and being exposed to that could really lead to severe illness for them. Same with their family members, they may have family members who have those underlying health conditions that could make them more at risk for severe illness. So that cannot be undersold, that's something that, you know, we've got to keep at the forefront of our minds. Next slide. So to sum everything up, I threw a lot of data at you, but the final thoughts that I would have to help guide your decision of what direction you want to go with this is I would say, you know, definitely continue the close relationship with us at the Health Department. I know, you know, the nurses, Blair, everybody's been reaching out to Donna, to Kim, everybody, and me, trying to work through some of these very unique and complex situations that we have every single day that we're at work. So they've been really great with that, so I would definitely encourage continuing to do that. Definitely the prevention methods that we know are slowing the spread of COVID, the wearing of the mask, the social distancing, the washing of our hands frequently, and then disinfection and cleaning of commonly touched surfaces. So continue to do that, and this is all in the Plan A Guidebook from the state. And then continue screening all staff and students upon entry, that again, can help catch some of those cases that, you know, parents may not have even thought about of, oh yeah, they were around this person. And by asking those questions, we're preventing, you know, possible illness in the schools. And then consider continuing providing a virtual option for parents that may not feel quite comfortable sending their kids to school just yet, and may not feel comfortable sending them, you know, five days a week or four days a week, whatever options you're considering at that point. So I definitely think a virtual option is still, should still be on the table for sure, if that is possible. And then the last part, which is the hardest, hardest part to do about all of this, is that we have to remain flexible. Guidelines will change, the science will evolve, we'll learn so much more from this two months from now, three months from now. And so that may change some of the decisions that are made in this room. And so that's the hardest part about it, is what we learned today is going to be different from what we learned two months from now. And that may require some constant retooling and some quality improvement. So that's the bulk of what I had to present, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could help ease some of the fears and concerns I'm sure some people will have about the fact that we are going to be having our students in classrooms closer proximity than six feet. I know, I guess the World Health Organization recommends three feet, whereas the CDC recommends six. And I just kind of wanted to know if you could help out with easing some of the concerns there.
Well, definitely when you're cramming more kids into a classroom, there is the increased risk of some of that virus being transmitted a little bit more easily than, you know, if you were spread out a little bit. But masks do still provide some protective benefit to that. Ideally, what you would do is have a layered approach of the mask, the social distancing, and then the cleaning and the washing of the hands. So there's still some protective factor when it comes to the mask, even if social distancing cannot always be maintained, that's the ideal. So you know, it's, it really is a catch, a toss-up on what parents are really willing to, what they're comfortable with. They may not feel comfortable with their child, I know one of the things that's in Plan A is that on the school buses, you don't have to put, you don't have to any longer put just one child in one seat and make, maintain that distance. So some, for some parents, that may be a step too far. For some, they may say that's completely fine, I think a lot of it is just down to what is their individual and family choice, really.
Is there any data or research that's been done that, that will tell us how much riskier or more dangerous it is for somebody to be three foot away, like the WHO recommends versus six foot away that the CDC recommends? I mean, are we increasing the risk level?
There's, you know, some data I'd have to go and pull and find from the state, but a couple of weeks ago when they were talking about some of those, the importance of masks, wearing masks and social distancing, and again, I'm going to butcher it if I do it off my memory here. But there is a really pretty nice graph that explained when you do things, do the mask, if you wear a mask alone, this is kind of the average type of risk. And if you do the mask and the social distancing together, then you lower that risk. So to spout that off the top of my head, I didn't come prepared with that, but I can certainly find that and share that with you.
Specifically, I'm wondering about, you know, the six foot versus the three, the CDC versus the WHO.
Right, and there's always going to be, you know, as long as I've been in public health, the WHO versus the CDC, there's always been points of differences with that. But generally speaking, the state of North Carolina follows what the CDC says.
Thank you.
Other questions?
The only question I got is, how effective have we been if a child's got the flu and a fever? They don't know that it's the flu, they just said, well, this child's got fever of 100. And then, you know, at that point, are they saying, well, you've got COVID symptoms or what?
So typically how that works, and Kim, you can jump in at any time, but if there's a, the state of North Carolina has put together a screening algorithm that says if you meet one of those symptoms, which fever is one of them, so if somebody, a child has a fever, then they cannot be admitted into school, that they have their certain procedures that they have to do. They're recommended to go and get a test, but the guidelines say that if they have that, they have to, if they choose not to get a test, they have to be out for that certain period of time. But if they go and get a test and it's determined that it's something else, then they can return to work or return to school using the normal school return, return to school policies. So it really is, you know, from my understanding of what the process has been, is when that happens, the school nurse then tells them that they need to follow up with their pediatrician, and then they go from there on determining what that diagnosis is.
Other questions?
I have one question. If, if a child is determined that they have a fever and they're sent home and they test positive for COVID, is the entire family then quarantined, or is it just the child?
Yes, so if there's a person that's in the household that is test positive, then the whole entire household contacts are considered quarantined.
Thank you.
Last question?
Other questions? And I'll, I'll find that graph for you when I get back, and I'll, I'll shoot it to you, send it to you as well, okay. I can do that, but yeah, it was a couple of weeks ago, so it's probably back here somewhere.
Listen, again, thank you so much for what y'all are doing and keeping the county safe, and I'm sorry about the timing, but thank you for making the time to be here.
Thank you.
Alright, so obviously the governor's announcement last week has triggered this meeting, so Dr. Jackson, can you update us on?
Good afternoon, Board members, and I know they're stepping out, but I also want to echo our chair's remarks. The Carteret County Health Department has been absolutely outstanding to work with, they have been incredibly responsive. There are days when Mr. Probst is involved in six-plus phone calls with the Health Department, they work very closely with our nurses, and so they have been critical partners for us, and they have been wonderful partners for us. They have been, as I said, very responsive, very helpful. Every situation is very unique, and so the contact tracing takes a lot of work, and we appreciate how hard they work with us. This afternoon, I certainly want to update our board and to share with you the opportunity the board has to consider elementary schools in Carteret County returning or going to Plan A as an opportunity the governor has just allowed. As our board knows, we have, from the start of this, starting July 1st, as I arrived, been operating under three sets of guidelines. There are lots of guidelines, the guidelines of the World Health Organization and the Centers for Disease Control have already been referenced earlier in this meeting. We operate primarily in terms of a starting place from governor's executive orders. So the Board of Education has to be allowed by the governor to move schools from Plan A to Plan B to Plan C. Again, as the governor allows you the opportunity to make that decision, then the Board of Education has the opportunity to weigh in. From the governor's executive orders, in the summer, we were asked to create plans for three scenarios, Plan A, B, and C. And then very quickly after that, we received two guidance documents on the screen. In the left center, that's the guidance document from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the Strong Schools NC Public Health Toolkit. That has been updated as we've gone forward, it's a very comprehensive document. An updated version of that was actually released during the governor's press conference last Thursday. There's also a companion document to that, which is a Frequently Asked Questions document that we use as well. The document that's in the lower center of the screen, Lighting Our Way Forward, which has one of our beautiful North Carolina lighthouses, not my favorite North Carolina lighthouse, one of our beautiful North Carolina lighthouses, that's a document of guidance information from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Again, extremely comprehensive, and I want to highlight the work of our school system staff in continually working through these literally hundreds of pages of guidance documents to understand what we can do, what we should do, and what we must do. Today I was in our schools, and I want to share with our Board of Education my incredible pride in our students and our staff. Every single student, every single staff member I saw was wearing their mask, they were maintaining social distance. Each school that I've walked into, I have had my temperature taken, I've been asked the screening questions, and that's universal, and it's not just when the superintendent shows up. And so our staff and our students are doing an amazing job. Our students, we worried early on about what masks might be like with our students, K-12, and they've done a wonderful job. And so a credit to our students and a credit to our staff for all their work, particularly as these guidance documents continue to evolve. And so in the guidance documents, we were asked to plan for A, B, and C. A was titled minimal social distancing, B was titled moderate social distancing, and then Plan C is remote learning only. Plan C was what we were doing, starting on March 14th, when the governor announced that schools would be closed during last school year. And in the summer, we were asked to plan for all three of those scenarios, and then the governor ordered that schools could open under Plan C, some districts decided to do that, or Plan B, which is more of a hybrid model, which is how we've been operating since August 17th, when the school year began. What that means in a nutshell is that first, parents have the option to choose remote learning. That does not change under Plan A, so parents may choose to continue to have their children learn 100% remotely. And that won't change should the board choose to move to Plan A. Plan A was not on the table until Thursday's governor's announcement. Once the governor gave this Board of Education the opportunity to consider that, and you're allowed to move forward if you would like to go forward. But again, the governor makes that decision in terms of when you might move. In this case, you have the opportunity to consider elementary schools, but you don't yet have the opportunity to consider middle schools or high schools, though we certainly look forward to the day that all of our students are back in our classrooms, because we understand that's where they need to be. And so again, on September 17th, the governor, Governor Cooper, announced that school systems may allow elementary schools to transition to Plan A on or after October 5th. And so to give you a feel for Plan A, the difference, we've started to learn Plan B. And I want to share with you, you do know we've had some state officials who've had the opportunity to visit in our schools under Plan B. And we have heard, and heard again today, that our school system really is a model for operating under Plan B. The creative way that our schools have approached the requirements and the way that our schools have been comprehensive in that approach is something that I have been told is something that should be held up to the state, is this is the way to work in these circumstances. And again, that's a credit to our staff, to our administrators, and to our students and families. One example of that was recently featured in some news articles, and that was the use of pool noodles for our youngest students to keep them six feet apart as they were walking in line. And so today, as I happen to be in one of our schools, I heard a student tell another, don't let the pool noodle smile. What that meant was if you let it droop between you, you were closer than six feet and it was smiling. And I thought that was absolutely precious and appreciated that a student was reminding another student. It wasn't a teacher speaking up and saying, hey, stay six feet apart. So a great credit to our teachers and staff. For Plan A, wellness checks continue. You heard our Health Director talk about the importance of temperatures being taken. Again, every school I walk into, this building, all of our facilities, we're taking temperatures anytime we come into the building. We are asking the screening questions, and that continues. Social distancing in Plan A schools, that would be elementary if that's what the board chooses, still continues in public spaces. So in hallways, in cafeterias, in auditoriums, in public spaces, we would need to keep that six feet distance, and certainly would continue to do that. Face coverings will continue to be required for our students and staff. The, you heard the Health Director talk about the evolving research and the evolving guidance, and one example of that certainly was face shields. It was a time that face shields were considered an appropriate alternate for face coverings, and then the guidance changed. And for a small amount of time, there was actually some conflict between the guidance documents. And now that's been cleaned up, so universally we know face shields are not an appropriate alternate for a face covering. If there were a medical need to go to a face shield, we'd have to work through an interactive process if it was an employee with Mr. Probst in Human Resources. But again, an example of that change in terms of the guidance changing. Hand sanitizer continuing to be readily available in our schools, we have the hand sanitizer stations, we have hand sanitizer in all of our classrooms, we have hand sanitizer outside. And I've watched as our students are automatically reaching for that. Hand washing continues to be emphasized, and then ongoing disinfecting of high-touch surfaces. Recently, as of the previous governor's announcement, and when we went to Plan 2.5, he allowed the opening of playgrounds. And in our school system, we didn't immediately open our playgrounds, because we needed to understand what it would take to open our playground equipment in a safe and practical manner, and we have now done that. And so as I watched students go into recess today, one of the students was carrying a crate, and in the crate was some wipes that the teacher uses. The students aren't allowed to use it, but the teacher uses to wipe down the rails and the high-touch surfaces after our students finishing, finished playing on the equipment. So we were very happy to be able to open up the equipment. And so all of those things continue to be the same under Plan A. The biggest change, and this is certainly important for all of us to understand and for parents to understand, because we want parents to be able to make an informed decision, they need to have a real good understanding of what Plan A might look like in our elementary schools. The biggest change is in the classrooms, that six-foot limit between individuals doesn't exist under Plan A. We certainly want to maximize social distance, and so if we have a classroom with fewer students and we can spread them out, we will do that. But in a classroom, students tend to move around as they're learning, particularly our youngest students, and we are referring to elementary in this case. And so there could be movement in the classroom as we bring back more students, if we bring back more students into the classroom. The quarantine rule of thumb, and our Health Director referenced that, is that close contacts must quarantine for 14 days. A close contact is defined as being within six feet of someone who is tested positive for a cumulative 15 minutes. And so with more students in the classroom, it's possible, if there were a positive case, that we would see more quarantining because we were within that six-foot bubble. So that quarantining rule of thumb doesn't change under Plan A. And so certainly it's important for us to understand that that is a possibility, that there could be more quarantining because there would be more students in the classroom. And certainly we want parents to have a good understanding of what that might look like, so that they're able to, again, make an informed decision. Under Plan A, transportation changes as well. This quote from the Department of Health and Human Service Guidance Document says it's strongly recommended that a school operating under Plan A for kindergarten through fifth-grade students should utilize a more restrictive Plan B approach for transportation. You may remember that the Plan B requirements changed right before school started. Initially, we were to have the six-foot distance on the school buses, but that changed to allow one student per seat. And so we've been operating with one student per seat under Plan A. The Board of Education has the opportunity to consider if we will continue operating under Plan B, or if we would move to a less restrictive Plan A for transportation, which would mean that potentially, we could have up to three students per seat. And again, we would be within that six-foot bubble if there were a cumulative 15 minutes. And so in a few moments, we'll get into the recommendations of the school system, but just to give you a good overview of what transportation might look like under Plan A. We did spend time with our school nurses, I want you to know how, how much I appreciate our school nurses, they are absolutely invaluable every single day of every school year, but particularly in this moment, they have been doing amazing work. They've been working sometimes late into the night as we've been working on contact tracing, on making sure we're keeping our students and staff safe. They met with me this summer prior to the initial presentation to the Board of Education about reopening plans. We met with them again, Mr. Probst was actually there with them this time, I had a conflict in my schedule and very much appreciate- I had a conflict in my schedule and very much appreciate the school nurses. And they shared feedback. They're certainly always concerned about the well-being and mental health of our staff. We know that our staff have been working very, very hard. Many of them in ways they weren't trained to work and particularly our teachers. They're teaching students who are both in-person and virtual. And that's certainly very tough work. And our school nurses certainly have concerns for them as they want to look out for our staff as well. They did state that they, they believe that the cleaning of our facilities under a potential Plan A will require greater attention. And that certainly makes a lot of sense. If you have more people in the building, then we need to make sure we're doing a great job with the disinfecting of our, and cleaning of our buildings. The school nurses did want the board members to understand that while the governor is lessening the restriction on social distancing in the classrooms. That the Department of Health and Human Services still defines close contact as within six feet for a cumulative 15 minutes. And so, there is the potential to have more exclusions or more quarantining when a positive case is traced back to the classroom. And again, we, we shared that earlier, but that was something the nurses wanted to make sure that I shared with the board. And I certainly appreciate our school nurses. We spent time and asked our elementary staff. And so, this survey reflects those who work in our elementary schools, not just our teachers, but our other staff members. To share with us their thinking. Now, this was prior to hearing any plan that would be potentially approved by the Board of Education. Because again, we are moving in many ways at lightning speed to make a pretty major change. And quite frankly, a change we didn't know was coming. We had no idea the governor would make the announcement he made last Thursday. And so, one of the questions that was asked was what considerations, thoughts, ideas would you like to make sure that district leaders consider in preparation for transitioning to Plan A? From that feedback, from the comments, major themes emerged. Major themes were around employee and student health, around time, around instructional planning, and around class sizes. I pulled out a couple of quotes. One was from a teacher who said, "I trust they will all make the best decision they can with their choices that they are given." Another teacher said, "Classroom teachers are having to spend their nights and weekends working with virtual students and to keep up with the face-to-face learners while balancing the off-site students." And so, I thought those really kind of captured kind of the, the breadth of the comments we received. I asked our curriculum instruction team to spend time in the survey, beginning to disaggregate that. A qualitative study is when it's not numbers, it's words. And this was certainly words as our staff was being surveyed. They put together this Wordle. So basically, I'm sure you're familiar with Wordles. But Wordles basically take all of the words, pull out those that are used the most, and then describe, and then show those graphically. And so, you'll see as we ask about considerations, the two words that stood out and the word that stood out most was the word students. And I love that because that tells me they are clearly focused on our students. And that's showing in their comments. The word teachers and certainly thinking about how that may be impacted, the word plan, the word virtual, and the word, word time. And so, in the Wordle, you'll see based on the number of times that those words were in their comments. You see the largest words there are the word plan and the word time. And so, we certainly have heard from our teachers that they need time to plan. This is tough work and they need that time to be prepared, especially if we're considering a transition. We also have asked them, "What concerns, if any, do you have about transitioning to Plan A at this time?" Major themes in the responses in this area were cleaning, social distancing, time for virtual students, and time for transition. One teacher said, "None. My job is better performed with students at school." Another teacher said, "My concern is that the school system is going to expect me to be both face-to-face and virtual." Those are two very different full-time positions. As we look at the Wordle for this particular question around concerns, again, the word used most, students. Behind that, the word time, the word distancing, the word plan, and then the word virtual. And you'll see in the Wordle, again, distance, students, time, and virtual are those that stood out in this area. We asked our teachers and elementary staff, "What do you need in your role to be successful in the implementation of Plan A?" Major themes there are help with our virtual students, cleaning supplies, and time to plan and transition. One said, "I need support for my virtual students because there's not enough time in the day to teach face-to-face and deliver the proper instruction, guidance, and feedback to another group of students online." Another said, "Adequate planning time. Also enough cleaning supplies to help ensure the health and well-being of my students." And then another said, "We need support, we need time, and we need grace." As we look at the Wordle there, students, again, the word that appears the most, the word time, the word virtual, cleaning, and the word plan. And clean, virtual, and time stand out in that area. The question was asked, "What is your comfort level with moving from to Plan A for elementary schools?" And you'll see that a one was very comfortable, a five was very uncomfortable. And so, in seeing the number of teachers in that percentage skewing to the uncomfortable. I really understand that from the standpoint of this is new and novel. The health director talked about the guidance documents change rapidly. What we're talking about today will be very different in two weeks. It's different than what we were talking about two weeks ago. We had no idea we'd be having this conversation or this special meeting prior to last Thursday. And so, I do think there's a lot of discomfort and the feeling of being uncomfortable, not just in the school system, but in our community. As we're all learning this new way of being and interacting with each other from behind face coverings. And so, moving on specifically in a return-to-learn plan, based on this opportunity for moving to Plan A. And looking at what that might look like for the elementary schools if the Board of Education chooses to go that way. I want to share with you very briefly, some thoughts about a timeline for that. Thoughts about transportation, the educational experience of our students, and then the great need for communication. And so, looking at the timeline, one of the first most crucial pieces to a transition to Plan A in this moment. Is understanding from our parents how they would like to move forward. Because that really is key to all of the logistical challenges. We need to know if parents would like for their students to attend five days a week to be in school face-to-face. We need to know if they would rather their students be 100% remote learning. Because that will impact things like the number of students placed in a class and impact how many students are on a bus. And so, that question around whether or not they're going to ride the bus or not is also important. And so, in talking with our elementary principals, and we've met multiple times since the governor's announcement. We decided that the best way to do that is a more personalized approach. You'll remember back in the summer, we surveyed all parents and we got back information. But there were a significant number of parents that we didn't hear from. And so, we had to go back and, and chase some, some information down. But in this case, the schools have said we'd rather communicate because we now have relationships through the child's teacher and through the school with the parents. And so, we'll reach out to the parents at the school level, classroom level, teacher level, to ask the parents, "Would you rather be face-to-face? Would you rather be virtual? Would you want your child to ride the bus or not ride the bus?" So that we'll have good information that we can use to plan around that. To make that happen though, we need that information sooner rather than later. And so, we're proposing a deadline of October 2nd. And so, the need to communicate that to parents that we really need this information from you becomes very critical. And so, depending on what the board decides today, we will send out information this evening. Been working with Ms. Nance, who does an amazing job with our communication for the district. Make sure that we're getting that communication out. So that parents know that they will be contacted by their school, primarily through the teacher. To ask their preference for either full-time or 100% remote learning. And whether or not they're going to be riding the bus. Part of the work in doing that is making sure that our teachers and those who'll be contacting parents understand the plan. And so, if the teacher's going to be calling parents, they need to make sure the teachers can answer any questions the parents have. And so, it may be Monday before a particular school actually starts reaching out to parents. Because they want to make sure the teachers are prepared to begin asking, asking those questions and answering questions they have. On the screen is a calendar for the month of October. Under Plan A, the proposal is this. October 12th, currently on our approved school calendar, is a teacher workday slash remote learning day. That was set in place, I'm guessing, because of the Columbus Day holiday. The proposal would be that that week, the 12th, continues to be a teacher workday slash remote learning day. It's kind of last minute to make a change to that. Families may have plans, teachers may have plans. The 13th, that Tuesday, would continue to be a Cohort A day, which would be expected. That actually allows Cohort A to catch up with Cohort B. Cohort A has been in school one day less than Cohort B because of the Labor Day holiday. That equals out the amount of time Cohort A and Cohort B have been together. Wednesday would be a remote learning day, as it already is every week. And then Thursday and Friday, and proposing that those would be remote learning days as well. So for our students, there's those three virtual days, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. What that allows in our elementary schools is the planning piece. You heard from the teachers over and over, "We need time to plan. We need time to transition." So it gives the time to our teachers to be able to do that. In many of our schools, if not all of our schools, we've moved furniture out of classrooms to allow us to maximize the six-foot buffer. The furniture is stacked up in gymnasiums, stacked, stacked up in empty classrooms throughout the building. And we need to put our classrooms back together. And certainly, that takes time as well. If you've been in an elementary teacher's classroom, they take great pride in their classroom and they spend a lot of time getting it set up. And they've asked for time. And so, giving those three remote learning days, the 14th, 15th, and 16th allows the time in the school. It also allows us the opportunity to make sure we've got our new bus routes put together. Because we'll have to reroute all of our buses based on parents who are saying, "I want to ride the bus or not ride the bus." We'll now have potentially more students on the bus. And so, they're great logistical challenges for us to move from one plan to another. And then what's being proposed here is that Plan A would begin on October 19th. Beyond providing the time for the school, the teacher, and the system to transition to a new plan. What this also does is allows us to finish the first nine weeks, which actually ends on the 15th. And begin a new nine weeks under Plan A. And so, that certainly helps our teachers with grading. If we have a student who's been with Ms. Smith and now they're going to be with a different teacher. My first nine weeks, here's my grade from my teacher. My second nine weeks, I start with a new teacher. And so, that changing at the grade period also makes a lot of sense in terms of our calendar. Looking at transportation, transportation wellness checks will continue to be performed. One of the things that we certainly have appreciated from our community is their patience. Our bus stops take a little bit longer right now. We've, we've gotten more efficient with that. But we have to take students' temperatures before they get on the bus. We have to ask the three questions before they get on the bus. And all of that stays in place. In terms of running our transportation, to run a Plan A scenario in school on Plan B buses. Logistically, we just can't make that work. Potentially, that would mean double and triple routes at a school, which would minimize instructional time before all the students got there. Pull out instructional support personnel who would still be on buses running. And create a cost in terms of the gas, et cetera, and running the buses. And so, the recommendation is that we maximize social distancing on the school. We do our best to limit our students to one per seat, every place that that's possible. But that we communicate that the buses may operate with multiple students in a seat. We brought back together three of our seven committees. You know that we had over 70 employees who were a part of our planning committees this summer. We brought back together our Health and Wellness Committee, our Transportation Committee, and our Communication Committee. Working together through the guidance documents. And their recommendation is that we actually limit the buses to two students per seat. And not go to three students per seat as we could within a typical year. Face coverings continue to be required on our buses. And we would certainly, may have to, I don't want to say certainly, we may have to operate some double routes. We're going to do everything we can to minimize that for all of the reasons I listed earlier. But we do want parents to know that potentially, if this plan were approved by the Board of Education. That students could be sitting two students to a seat. And so, they certainly do need to know that. Because again, in a quarantining situation, you would be within the six feet. And you would assume that the route would be 15 minutes or longer. And so, in that case where we were going two students per seat. We would board the students in a very smart way. One student per seat until we had to go to two students per seat closer to the school if the bus was actually moving towards the school. In terms of the educational experience, I talked about the social distancing in public spaces and we continue to do that under Plan A. We'd also want to again remind the parents and, and the board that in the school, in the classrooms. We've no longer had that six-foot buffer depending on the number of students in the classroom. We would maximize that and keep our students as far apart as possible, given the numbers. But that would be a change. A big change, and this one I'm quite excited about. And I do believe that this will tremendously help with the concerns that were mentioned by our teachers in the survey. And the survey results we just took a look at. And that is using this opportunity to transition to a plan. Where teachers are no longer at the elementary level, having to teach both face-to-face and virtual. To do that has required cooperation and collaboration between schools. And I'm very proud of the work between schools, our principals and our curriculum and instruction team, to be able to put that plan together. So, if a school had three students in third grade who wanted to learn remotely. We couldn't assign a teacher to only three students and the other teachers had many more than that. But we could take those three students, pair them with students at another school, assign them one teacher. And then they would be with that teacher for the next nine weeks under this plan, learning remotely. And so, again, it, what it does for the teacher, makes it easier for the teacher because they're only teaching face-to-face or they're only teaching virtual. But more importantly, what it does for our students is improves the educational experience. Because their teacher is focused on that one method of operation. They are exclusively focused on teaching virtually or exclusively focused on remote learners. It also gives us the opportunity to continue to grow our ability to teach in a virtual environment. One of the ongoing conversations we've had has been around synchronous or asynchronous learning. And certainly synchronous learning has challenges in terms of bandwidth that may be available. Things like do students have internet access? We're very grateful for the funding we've received and being able to provide hotspots to students who may need that for internet access. But with fewer teachers, in terms of number of teachers, teaching virtually, the bandwidth issue is mitigated. And with the hotspots now being available, internet access is mitigated. And so, we'll be able to, on an opt-in basis, as our teachers are ready and prepared. They'll also have time for professional development around being able to, they'll be able to teach synchronously their virtual students. I don't know that it's going to be full-time synchronous learning to start with as we grow our ability. But then those lessons will be recorded. So that if my child is learning remotely, but not available to log in at 10 o'clock for the English lesson or the reading lesson. My child could go back and watch that recorded lesson because it's being recorded. So again, an improvement to our virtual and remote learning teaching for the students who choose that option. For our students who are in a face-to-face environment, it's an improvement for them as well educationally. Because their teacher is no longer being drawn in three different directions with two cohorts and a virtual cohort. Now, the teacher can focus completely on the students in the classroom. And so, I do believe that in this potential transition to a Plan A, we have the opportunity. To increase the educational and improve the educational experience of all of our students. I do in this moment want to pause though, and say, "Our teachers are phenomenal." The educational experience our kids are having and have had since August 17th is absolutely outstanding. Particularly when you take light of the circumstances. They're doing such a great job. As I've been in each of our schools and in our classrooms and stood and watched our teachers teaching. I've just been blown away by their skill, by their passion, by their love and care for our students. It's clear that they're there for all the right reasons. Our school system is incredibly blessed by the teachers who serve our students. And so, the educational experience, we do have the opportunity for improvement. Last area I'd mentioned, talking about our elementary schools, is the importance of communication. We have to do an outstanding job of informing parents of the plan should the board choose to make a change today. Want to make sure our parents know what that looks like. And they have the opportunity to ask questions about what this might look like and feel like. And again, allowing, and the governor has said, "The Board of Education could move us to Plan A for elementary schools on October 5th." And as I've shared, I'm proposing October 19th. That additional two weeks not only gives the school system an opportunity to really be prepared. But there's an opportunity for others to ask questions, whether that's our parents or our teachers, to learn what this plan may look like and feel like functionally. We also need to survey our parents. We need to get that started right away. So we know whether or not our students will be face-to-face. And that certainly helps us with the planning in the building and planning for the assignment of teachers. And then we've got to do a great job. If a child has been 100% If a child has been one hundred percent remote to this point, their teacher may change because the teacher's been teaching both face-to-face and virtually. And so we need to make sure that our parents are aware of the change of teacher, and we've done a good job helping the student be prepared for that change, and we've helped the teacher or the parents be prepared for that change as well. And so again, that time, that buffer, to allow all of us to be prepared to have an incredible first day of Plan A should the board choose to go that way on October nineteenth becomes incredibly important. And so very briefly, again, the board unfortunately is not yet able to make a decision about middle school. And I say unfortunately because I do believe that locally, the Board of Education should have the opportunity to make that decision. But right now, the governor makes the decision for when you can consider the middle schools and high schools, and you can't do that yet. Before our middle schools, I would remind the board that in the initial plan we've been operating under, we asked parents kindergarten through eighth grade to make a nine-week commitment. So choose face-to-face or choose one hundred percent remote. And at the end of the nine weeks, you'll have the opportunity to change. If you'd like to go from remote to face-to-face, or if you'd like to go from face-to-face to remote, you have that opportunity. And so for our middle schools, what the principals have proposed and have asked for is that the schools communicate with the parents and let the schools and the teachers actually reach out to the parents and ask, do you want to change from remote to face-to-face or vice versa? They're asking to use the same deadline of October second, which allows them also to make changes to their schedules and to the student assignments as necessitated by any changes that parents have made. Those students who would be returning to face-to-face for the first time, they've not been face-to-face so far, they would start under this proposal on October nineteenth. Again, that's the start of a new grading period, so it's a real logical time to make that start, and it gives schools the opportunity to be prepared for that. And then it also, and I think I mentioned the second nine weeks, the on the calendar, I am proposing that the Board of Education consider allowing for the middle schools, the three days that would be used at the elementary schools, the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, as remote learning days. I'd like to propose that we use those at the middle school as well. It does several things for our middle schools. First of all, it gives them the opportunity to make any transitions that would be necessitated by parents who are changing whether their students are face-to-face or remote. It also allows our middle school teachers the opportunity to spend time in planning, to prepare for the second nine weeks, to finish up their grading, because unfortunately, they're continuing to teach both virtually and face-to-face. We've looked for the opportunity to make a change there, multiple meetings with our middle school principals, the way licensure works at middle schools. Unfortunately, that that virtual option we're using with the elementary schools doesn't translate to the middle school based on the way middle school teachers are licensed. We are continuing to work hard to come up with ways to ease teacher strain for our middle school teachers. And I've asked the principals to actually reach out to all the teachers at the middle school level and ask them for their best ideas so that we can look for opportunities to help our teachers in this moment, knowing that anything we do for our teachers translates to good things for our students. We are aware that, just like we were surprised by the opportunity for elementaries to go to Plan A, the governor could at any moment choose to allow middle schools to go to Plan A if you choose to do that. And so what I am hopeful for is that if the board chooses to transition the elementary schools to Plan A, that we have the opportunity to learn from the transition process from this moment to that, to use that for our middle schools and high schools, and may actually be able to accelerate that process. The option switch for the middle schools would be on October nineteenth. For our high schools and working with our high school principals, their schedule has worked out very well for them, having that fifth period at the end of the day, which allows the teachers at the high school level time to plan, time to work with students they have that they're teaching virtually and teaching face-to-face. And so that extra time at the end of the day certainly has been very helpful for our high school teachers. What we have heard from the high school teachers, the biggest challenge they're facing, the greatest frustration they're facing is students who are not engaging in remote work, either the students who are one hundred percent remote or the students who are not face-to-face because their cohort is not actually in school that day. And so we do need parent assistance in helping to monitor students to make sure that they're actually doing their work and they're engaged in their work and they're submitting their work. I've heard that sometimes they just forgot to hit submit. And so certainly any encouragement we can give and will continue to give to parents to encourage their students to continue to to get that work done will be helpful, not only to the students and their learning, very helpful to them, but also to our teachers because that is their source of of pain in this moment is the students who aren't engaging because it certainly hurts their heart because they want our students to do wonderful things as they always have. Our high school students, under the plan we adopted in the summer, they have the opportunity to transition from face-to-face to one hundred percent remote at the semester break. And so if we've not had a change allowed by the governor by the time we get to Christmas, which is our semester break this year, then we would need to put together a plan, probably very similar to the middle school plan for parents, to indicate they'd like to move from face-to-face to remote or vice versa. And so for them, the calendar doesn't change. They still have the twelfth as that teacher work day slash remote day. They would continue to, the students would continue to attend. Again, the difference at the high school level is they do have that fifth period built into every day, which is certainly helpful for our high school staff. And so ultimately, and I'll be happy to answer all the questions board members might have, it is my recommendation that, as allowed by the governor, after working with our principals, the cabinet staff, speaking with the health director, and receiving comments from our teachers and school nurses, it is my recommendation, as your superintendent, that the Carteret County Public Schools, elementary schools transition to Plan A beginning on October nineteenth, two thousand twenty. And Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions board members may have.
Mr. Gammun?
Uh, Mr. President, I think the biggest concern that I've heard from most of the principals and teachers is they'd like to see that Wednesday continued as cleaning day and and helpful for a remote learning. They're saying that that all the work they're having to do without that Wednesday's cleaning day, you know, that they're having to stay late hours in the afternoon and, you know, of course, you know, there's no extra pay in these extra hours, and so they're really concerned about the time, and they'd like to still see that Wednesday as the day for cleaning.
Yes, sir, thank you. And so that's certainly something we considered. I think that going forward, and the Board of Education may elect to continue to have Wednesdays as remote learning days, I think that's absolutely within the purview of the Board of Education. The change going forward for elementary schools is that teachers will no longer be both teaching cohort A, cohort B, and virtual. So instead of teaching three groups of students, they'll be teaching one group of students, which is more akin to what we've always done. So we're getting closer and closer to quote-unquote "normal." I don't know that we'll ever be normal again, but we're getting closer to that work because teachers who are teaching face-to-face will be teaching face-to-face all the time. They won't be teaching two different cohorts. So ultimately, that opportunity for the virtual day to separate cohorts, to be able to work with the students I'm teaching virtual, that need has dropped off the table. Disinfecting, being able to do that on Wednesdays between cohorts, though, is a loss of time. And so that will put pressure on our custodial staff and the need to make sure we're doing a great job disinfecting not only throughout the day, but also in the evenings. I do want to point out that our teachers are doing an amazing job with cleaning tables and desks between groups of students, particularly at the middle school and high school level, with disinfecting playground equipment and doing a lot of things they've not been asked to do in the past. But that's certainly in the purview of the Board of Education. That's not a part of the recommendation simply because we are moving back from teaching three groups of students to teaching one group of students and moving back towards a quote-unquote "more normal" environment.
Other questions?
My question is actually more for the the middle school at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
The, they seem like the only group that really, at this point, would not, I hate to say catch a break, but they would still be teaching several groups of students. Do we have a plan in place to help alleviate that for those groups? I know that they, most of them teach three, three classes per teacher, and then if you have three classes of cohort A, three classes of cohort B that you're teaching virtually, that just seems like a lot.
It is a lot, and thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Wheatley. We've been working hard to create that plan, and in fact, felt like we had a good plan working forward, and then had a long meeting last night with all of the middle school principals. And the plan, similar to the elementary plan, was that we would have teachers who only taught virtually and only taught face-to-face. But where we ran into issues was with the licensure of teachers. So a middle school student has multiple teachers throughout the day. One teacher teaches English Language Arts, one teaches math, one teaches science, one teaches social studies. And so if we pull out one student to learn remotely, you have to pull out four teachers. And so then the dynamics of how many students are left in each classroom begin to multiply. And even when we looked at a school system solution across all five of our middle schools, the middle school principal said, we just can't get there yet. And I'm really, my area of greatest concern is our middle school teachers. And so as we concluded our meeting last night, and then I communicated with middle school principals even later into the evening, we're continuing that work. And so I've asked the middle school principals to sit down with the teachers to say, what can we do in this moment? Middle school principals proposed eight different scenarios that might be helpful and gave the pros and cons for all of those. One of the scenarios was to look at the possibility of actually using a virtual week or time period between grading periods. And so in this plan, we are giving them those three days, which gives some relief to them. We're not doing that at the high school level. Again, the high school has that fifth period. We looked at the possibility of a shortened day at the middle school, but then we ran into challenges with running our transportation system because many of our middle school drivers are elementary school employees. And so we'd be pulling an elementary school employee out of a classroom with students in it to go drive the middle school bus route. And so that is something that we are committed to doing, and I'm hopeful that we can call the board and say, hey, we've got a great idea sooner rather than later. I can also tell you that I have no, I have no idea what tomorrow holds, but I've heard that there may be movement towards a Plan A opportunity for middle schools sooner rather than later. But again, that's that's up to the governor.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question.
Um, I got a question.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question, Ms. Ayers, and I'll repeat it in case others couldn't hear. The question was, if on the elementary schools we go to Plan A and we had a positive case, potentially we would quarantine the entire classroom for fourteen days. The answer to that is yes, potentially. Rule is six feet for a cumulative fifteen minutes. And so at that point, the contact tracing that would be done through our school nurse, working with Mr. Probst and Dr. Kay, and the health department, who ultimately makes the determination about quarantines, would be based on that classroom situation. So if it was a classroom where the students have quite a bit of movement, then it may be the entire classroom. If it's a classroom, and part of developing this plan and giving us three weeks to continue to refine this plan, is the possibility of using in the elementary classrooms a concept of pods. So a group of students, four, five, six students, they are within six feet, but they stay together throughout the day. So that pod may go to work with the teacher at one time, or they may go to a center at one time, and that would help not have to quarantine the entire class. But to your question, it would be possible that an entire classroom could be quarantined if we had a positive contact or positive test result. Yes, ma'am. The question was, would we be prepared to continue to teach those students online or remotely for fourteen days? And I can certainly say we're much more prepared today than we were March thirteenth from all we've learned. But that would be if the teacher were able to, unless the teacher happened to not be able to, we would use the teacher to teach that group remotely. She would, she or he would continue to teach their class. If the teacher were not available, then we would have to utilize a substitute. One of the challenges we've had this year is that our number of substitutes has been diminished. Typically, in the substitute pool, we have quite a few retired school employees, and one of the vulnerable groups in this pandemic is the older population. And so there are some substitutes who've chosen not to substitute right now, have told us they will be back when they can safely. So to your question, we would move to continue those students' education remotely. Thank you. The question was about our reading specialist, our exceptional children teachers, and others other than classroom teachers, are we prepared to have them teach either only face-to-face or virtually? And the answer to that is, I can't answer that yet. That's a part of the further refinement of the plan, looking at a school-by-school basis, which students are remote, which students are face-to-face. Ideally, for as many teachers as possible, they wouldn't have to teach face-to-face and virtually. I don't want to say that that's absolutely absolute in this moment until we've had the opportunity on a school-by-school basis to work through the schedules based on parent survey results for who will be attending face-to-face. And so that's still work to be done, Ms. Ayers. Thank you.
Yeah, it appears to be that a lot of the middle school issues hinge on licensure. Have we considered calling DPI and asking them for some grace with licensure? I mean, would they even consider that?
Mr. Probst, would you like to answer that?
Just a note.
Hey, stand up or I can just knock my head.
I just, I mean, it's done hard to ask questions.
Yeah, no. There's been a lot of conversations with licensure in the state about handling situations with remote learning as well, but they are very adamant about licensure, having maintained a right licensure teaching. I don't see any way of us to get in waivers or any grace in that situation.
Very good.
I'll simply state, we're not going to give up coming up with a solution for our middle school teachers. They do amazing work with our adolescents, and in some ways can be one of the most challenging times in all of our lives. And so we certainly want to take care of our middle school teachers, and we're going to continue to look for that solution and really hope that they're going to help us come up with that solution, something that we can do for them, because we know when we do something for them, we're really doing that for every child they teach.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, the transportation situation, uh, we're getting pretty dire trying to find drivers, are we not?
Yes, sir, that is a challenge.
Because from what I'm understanding, most of the elementary schools are saying that they can't even find a substitute bus driver, that they're so desperate right now that trying to get somebody to do that route, if somebody's sick or is out, they have a hard time trying to fill that spot.
Yes, sir, you're exactly right. And in fact, as I mentioned earlier, we have fewer substitutes available, fewer alternate bus drivers available. There was just a bus driving class actually here in this building last week, and so we're hopeful to be able to add some bus drivers to our bus driving pool. So we're continuing to do that work. We also have vacancies in our school system. And so we have attempted to advertise those positions or recruit those positions. We're just not seeing the number of applicants, and that's been something that's been going down year to year for some time in schools generally across our state and throughout the nation. But in this time in the pandemic, we are struggling to hire positions, and bus drivers is one of those positions. We never have enough bus drivers in any situation, but that, you're exactly right. That is a need in our school systems, additional bus drivers.
Other questions?
Other questions? I have a couple, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Um, would you just clarify, um, student teacher ratio is still in effect for virtual? I've, I've had parents say, "Well, I don't want my child, child going virtual because they'll be in a virtual class with 100 students."
Yes, sir. So all of the class size mandates, you, as you know, we have class size mandates for kindergarten through third grade. Those remain in place. And part of the work will be that we're not going to overload a virtual teacher. A virtual teacher would have a similar class load to other teachers in the district. And so if it's typical to have 16 students in a classroom, we would continue to have 16 students in a classroom. And so again, that's part of that, getting that information from the parents as quickly as we can so that we can do that work to make sure. So thank you for that question. That the class load for teachers, regardless of face to face to virtual, would be as similar as possible.
Great. Well, thank you for clarifying that. There were a lot of questions around that. And so you, you said all this, I just want to repeat it so I can understand it. And, and we all recognize that there is no great option for every child out there. I think we all recognize that in, in-person teaching, um, is the best option, but some parents don't feel comfortable yet going to that. So getting the children to school, um, we will move to Option A potentially, but no more than two children per seat while trying to maximize distance. Once they're there, uh, the classroom, there is no social distancing. However, we will communicate with our teachers that, uh, this pod technique is the best option. So if you can have six kids, um, not isolated, but in a group that they won't interact. So if there is a case, um, potentially the whole class would not go out. Um, child nutrition will still happen in the classrooms?
Yes, sir, and thank you for asking the question about child nutrition, if I may. Um, our child nutrition staff has been amazing. And so what we're seeing in our schools is actually we're delivering food and hot bags and cold bags to each of the classrooms, and the child nutrition nutritionists are delivering that down, and then our teachers are handing it, handing it out to our students. We would continue to do that, continue to have, um, pickup available for children who select the 100% remote option, so they would still be able to access school meals, breakfast, and lunch. So we do not see any changes to, uh, child nutrition.
Okay. Um, again, back to the classroom, are, are our teachers going to be, um, required to pod students or only if it works? Um, so if a parent, I think a parent would feel more comfortable if they're with, their child's with six kids as opposed to 20, but that might not be the case.
And that's, that's probably the best way to answer that. That might not be the case. And so parents will have the opportunity, and part of having the teachers reach out to the parents or the school reach out to the parents, is that the parents can ask specific questions about that classroom. In the primary grades, a pod system works much better than the elementary grades, elementary being fourth and fifth, sometimes third, fourth and fifth. Um, and so it may not be appropriate for that teacher. We also try to give teachers flexibility in their pedagogy or how they teach, and so they may want to use more movement. And so certainly, parents need to know what that might look like. Um, but we will certainly recommend and ask our teachers to keep students as socially distanced as possible. And certainly, they would be motivated to do that because they also want to keep their students as safe and healthy as possible.
Right. And I applaud you for, um, surveying our students, um, through the teachers who have the relationships. And so if this plan is approved, beginning immediately tomorrow, um, we will start, um, planning for who's going to be face to face, who will be all virtual. We know that there's a nine-week commitment there. Um, and we would potentially start October 19th.
Yes, sir. That is my recommendation.
Dr. Jack- Jackson, there's been some concern about, um, teachers being able to teach phonics and certain things, um, with masks on. Um, and what, what is the, how, what is the rule going to be in the classrooms with regards to masks? Is that, is there a absolutely no masks off policy? Or there, could there be some exceptions to be able to, um, for certain cases, to be able to do certain things? Um, I know that the, as far as quarantining goes, it does not matter whether they have masks on or not, they're going to be quarantined regardless. So the Health Department doesn't, uh, appear to care as far as quarantine wise, but I know that it does increase the, the level. How much, I guess we're not exactly sure, but what's the policy going to be there?
So according to the guidance documents, our students and staff have to wear face coverings and, and the face shields, which is more of a clear covering. Initially, those were allowable, and now they're not a suitable, um, substitute for the face covering. Um, and so that continues to evolve. There are face coverings that have a clear front, and we have those from some, for some of our exceptional children's teachers, and we'll continue to look at options to help with, particularly in speech language work that we do with some of our students and with, um, as you shared, phonics work and early grades work, looking for those opportunities. But the face covering piece is a part of our guidance documents, and we are required to continue to go forward with that. If a student, um, or if an employee had a medical issue and needed to have some sort of exemption from that requirement, uh, for an employee, they have to work through Human Resources and go through an interactive process, uh, with medical documentation. For a student, they work directly with the principal, and we work through that situation, uh, on a case by case basis, but the face coverings are required.
Thank you.
So I've heard that pre-K kids are back to school pre-COVID, like they get to go to centers and get to live like normal precares. But kindergarten in the next room are living a completely different world. So when we go back, if we go to Plan A, will the kindergarteners get to live like the pre-career?
The, um, interesting thing, a few years back, the state made the determination to pull pre-K from the Department of Public Instruction, and so they answer to the Department of Health and Human Services. Consequently, they have a whole separate set of guidelines. And so pre-K operates under those guidelines that are similar but different. And you're right, they do have a different set of rules, and so their rules aren't changing. Um, they have been, uh, operating under, and thank you for asking about pre-K, they have been operating under four days a week in concert with the rest of our school system. And so pre-K will have the option to move towards five days a week.
Right.
Um, in talking to Ms., um, Huntley, who's our pre-K director, there's the possibility that doing that will open up some pre-K seats and make available some additional pre-K seats. And so that's work to be done if the board chooses to go to Plan A. But kindergarten and pre-K will be different, and primarily it's because they're guided by two different sets of guidance documents. The rules for pre-K are more similar to childcare rules than they are to K6 rules or K12 rules.
Okay.
Got one last question for you. Uh, this past week, and I think, if Rich, you can answer this question about bus drivers are having problems with the temperature gauges, not reading properly when they stu- that, uh, it only read low temperature, it wouldn't read normal body temperatures when they put it, said that was the biggest problem they were having when the kids were getting loaded this week to test in their temperatures. Uh, and we got a solution for that?
I have not heard that, Mr. Goblin. Um, every bus should have a backup thermometer, so if they don't, um, we can, we can rectify that very easily, so, but I have to know about it before I can make it happen. So if, if that's happening, then I need to know, and we can take care of that very easily.
That was, that was the word I got from the principals telling me this, uh, that, that that's what the bus drivers were facing, and the nurses at the schools, same thing was going on with their stuff, too. That the, uh, gauges were not reading properly.
I, I, I'm hoping that if, if we have equipment that's not working, they'll reach out. I, I've, I've talked to a lot of our principals, I've not heard any of that, but, but I hope you'll just follow up with them.
Very, very easily corrected.
Yeah.
We just know about it.
I, I'll just say that that's the, um, in our planning process, that's the reason we built in redundancy. So having multiple thermometers on the bus and also multiple batteries on the bus. And so if we do have an issue with the thermometer while a bus driver is out on the roads, we can grab the alternate thermometer. And so certainly, following back up with our Director of Transportation to make sure that all of those safeguards are in place is important. I've not received that feedback. I do know that, you know, taking temperature is not something we did before August 17th, and now I'm getting my temperature taken eight, nine, 10 times a day. And, and you know, that's okay, but, um, and we have a process for recalibrating our thermometers, and so we're trying to do that as well, um, to make sure that they are accurately reading our students and staff members.
Y'all have done a phenomenal job training, um, and reminding everybody about taking your temperature. I've been in a couple of the school buildings and have been tackled because I forgot to take my temperature. So it's, um, it's becoming, you know, part of the routine, so.
Thank you for saying that because our staff do take the safety and well-being of our students and each other as their primary focus, and they're so very good at that. I appreciate hearing that. I don't want you tackled.
Yeah.
But I'm glad they're willing to do it to make sure your temperature is checked.
And taking it above and beyond the temperature checks, I mean, this whole, everything y'all have done has blown my mind. In my opinion, y'all have turned over every stone. I'm sure that there are some we've missed, but y'all have gone above, above and beyond the call of duty, in my opinion, thinking about the kids, the teachers, the parents. I mean, this is, um, I, I am so impressed to be associated with y'all, and I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. The team is amazing.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Jackson, I'm a mother with two elementary aged boys. Um, I'm concerned with, with everyone in the building, but to see my children return to school and see the children in the schools and how they are responding to actually having in-person education, even if it's two days a week, uh, is tremendous. Um, I, like I said, I, I do worry about everyone's health and safety, but I appreciate your staff going above and beyond to make sure that we're able to be in the classrooms. And I personally think that it's imperative that we get our children back to school as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Wheatley. I, I'll just share with you, I was at Newport Elementary School today, and Principal McLinnie shared with me a story of a kindergartner who got out of the car yesterday morning and hollered out, "I'm so glad to be at school." And the kindergartner, this is all they know about school, wearing face coverings and getting their temperature checked, but it is meaningful and impactful. And even the CDC has said our kids need to be in the building. And so thank you for that feedback as a parent, and it has been delightful to see our children back in the building because it also impacts our teachers. Their eyes light up when the kids walk into the classroom.
Along that same, sorry, real quickly, along the same lines, um, I, I have some friends whose children have underlying conditions that they may not come back five days a week. And I really appreciate, uh, bolstering our virtual options with an individual teacher. And I would just ask those parents, um, that, that are considering other options to, to please, um, stick with us as we, we evolve and, uh, and enhance our virtual experience.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank you for all the work that you guys have done on this new plan, and I, I like what I, um, what I see. And it is a crazy new world when we have so many kids begging to go back to school. I mean, they are begging to go back, which is an, an awesome thing. Um, and I can, um, I do have concerns about the middle school teachers and their workload. I hope we can get that resolved as quickly as possible. So I only hope and pray that the governor will actually, um, hear our concerns and act, uh, expedite the plan for the middle schools going back to school full-time as well.
Thank you, sir.
But if, unless there's some more questions, I would love to move to adopt this plan that you guys have recommended.
I want to say that I've got two high schoolers, and I run into a lot of high school parents and high school kids, and the high schoolers are struggling also with two days a week. Every Sunday night, it's like it's our first day of school. It's been that way for six weeks, and then three days a week, it's like we're going on a vacation or we're sick and we're trying to get caught up. And I, I know middle school, I, you know, everybody I talk to is struggling. So I want us all to get back to school.
That is one of my only disappointments, is that we're not able to, to open it five days a week for everyone.
Agreed.
Was that, um, would you like to make that a motion? Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, unless there's some more questions or more discussion.
I'll second that motion.
I would love to make a motion to go ahead and adopt this plan, to take our kids back to five days.
Okay, is that the way it's going to start for October the 19th?
Yes.
Directly as proposed by Dr. Jackson.
There, there's a motion on the floor, and then a second, so let's vote, and then we can have some more discussion for sure. So motion by Mr. Day to adopt the, um, Plan A, um, as presented, seconded by Ms. Wheatley. Uh, all those that are in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
And Melissa has, has already texted and said if by chance she drops off, that she would be in support of this as well. So that's a unanimous vote to return elementary, um, to Plan A.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we, did you ask her just to repeat her?
Can you repeat your vote, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and I didn't mean to rush that, but were there other questions?
Uh, is that going to include that Wednesday for cleaning? Are we still going to have that included in this?
The recommendation was to go five days a week, starting on October 19th. And so we do have the Wednesday remote learning days for our middle schools and our high schools. We have it for our elementary schools until the 19th, when we go Plan A. But the recommendation was to go five days a week for elementary schools, starting on October 19th.
Aye. Any other questions? I, I just want to reiterate one last time, uh, what a phenomenal job you've all been through or, or you've, you've been doing. And what we've asked our, uh, employees to go through is just unprecedented. So if you know anybody that works for the school system and see them in public, if you would please take the time to thank them for what they're doing. In a lot of cases, they're working three times harder, so this is certainly a step in the right direction, and, uh, thank you for all the work that went into this plan.
Hopefully, it won't be much longer.
That's right. That's right. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, Dan.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins, seconded by Mr. Goblin. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.